Everybody, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. If you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. What a great turnout. Sure appreciate everybody taking the time to come today. We're doing our proclamation on National Rural Health Day today. It's interesting, part of the work I did in Salem was around healthcare policy and got to learn quite a bit about rural healthcare. And now here as a county commissioner, we have the honor to celebrate the work that you all do and thank you for that work. So again, National Rural Health Day is celebrated on the third Thursday of November to recognize the contributions of rural communities and highlight the challenges and successes of rural healthcare. The day aims to raise awareness of issues like healthcare access, provider shortages, and health disparities in rural areas, while also promoting the resilience and spirit of rural America. What we're gonna do today is I'm gonna ask Commissioner Boyce to read the proclamation. Tamara will call up some organizations so we can present proclamations. Cory will do some photos. And then I'm gonna ask folks from each of the groups to come forward and talk a little bit about the great work they do in our community. So Commissioner Boyce, would you please read the proclamation?
Sure, so this is a proclamation for Rural Health Day, celebrating the power of rural on November twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas we recognize that rural communities in the United States are the backbone of our country. They feed and fuel us. They steward our precious lands, and one out of every five Americans live rurally. And whereas we know that communities in rural Douglas County are wonderful places to live, work, and play, ruralities know and selflessly support one another and thrive with resiliency and resourcefulness. Whoever put that word in there needs to have a talk with me next time.
Is that kind of made up word?
Yeah.
Sometimes I do that to us.
I'm sure that's real. Whereas we recognize that in Douglas County, we have a large rural population, and those citizens face unique challenges accessing the healthcare services they need and deserve. They often have to travel greater distances to see healthcare providers, are less likely to have access to broadband to utilize telehealth services, are an aging population suffering from a greater number of chronic conditions, have larger percentages of un- and uninsured citizens, and are more likely to live in an area that has a shortage of doctors, dentists, and mental healthcare providers. And whereas on National Rural Health Day, we're committed to supporting the health and well-being of rural Douglas County citizens and celebrate our rural healthcare providers who work tirelessly to meet their needs. And whereas, through the foresight of our Board of Commissioners, Douglas County implemented a unique public health model more than nine years ago, providing us the ability to remain nimble, flexible, cooperative, effective, timely, and innovative in addressing public health needs in our rural communities. Under this model, the Douglas County government, through the Board of Commissioners, retains administrative authority over public health. We continue to employ a public health officer to oversee programs while contracting with the Douglas Public Health Network to administer these programs and collaborate with community partners to deliver public health services throughout the county. And whereas we recognize that rural physicians, nurse practitioners, nurses, dentists, first responders, and emergency medical services are especially critical in our rural communities, where nationally twenty percent of the population lives, but nearly sixty percent of all medical traumas occur. And whereas we know the value of rural healthcare programs and the tremendous opportunity that rural practitioners have in offering comprehensive, compassionate, patient-centered, and holistic care to patients. And now therefore, we, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Thursday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, as Rural Health Day in Douglas County, and ask all of our citizens honor and support our rural healthcare providers, practitioners, organizations, and support staff, and also work together to bring about a stronger, healthier rural Douglas County.
All right, so we invited a number of people, but let's get started at the top here. So Douglas Public Health Network, Teresa. And the mission of Douglas Public Health Network is to engage the public community organizations in all levels of government to improve the health and emergency preparedness of the people of Douglas County. They value collaboration, engagement with partners, and entrepreneurship, availability, responsiveness, and ingenuity.
I'm gonna have to talk.
All right, on to our medical first responders. Is anybody here from Umpqua Valley Ambulance? Nope. North Douglas Fire. I saw Brian Hawke.
Couple with the phone, sorry. Couple with the phone, too. We do backups with the phone. All right. Sometimes the phone's better. Thank you.
If you want, we can put you in the queue if you want.
Oh, it's good at the angle.
Okay, well, it's new.
He likes that angle. All right, Central Douglas Fire and Rescue.
Paparazzi is getting on.
That's right, I know.
Missed that one. Perfect.
Okay.
How good. Okay, next we have Adapt Integrated Healthcare. The whole front row. Mission, Adapt's mission is to provide the communities, their communities, access to high-quality primary care, addictions treatment, behavioral healthcare, and prevention services to promote health and restore lives.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work you guys do.
Did we get anybody here from Adiva Health? What about UCAN? Cow Creek? Mercy or Mercy Foundation? Ford Family, let's see. Thrive Umpqua, I saw, I saw Lance.
Lance, good to see you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Umpqua Health Alliance? HIV Alliance? Lower Umpqua Hospital? Evergreen. Medicine and Urgent Care. Evergreen Family Medicine was born when a group of doctors participating separately understood their commitment to their patients and community was better served with a comprehensive system of care delivered by a cohesive team of health professionals. They have involved into an innovative, advanced, patient-centered home, where patients of any age and circumstances can be confident of compassionate care and proper guidance as they navigate the healthcare system. Let's see, Red Cross? Anybody from Red Cross? Let's see. Douglas County Sheriff's Office, the jail? Do you wanna come up?
Sometimes our healthcare system starts with a call to nine-one-one, too.
Yeah.
I might know that firsthand.
Perfect, thank you.
We do a lot of referrals to these other health organizations.
It works hand in hand with them, that's how it helps. And let's see, Roseburg VA? I didn't see anything from that. That's all I had. Did I miss anybody out in the audience that's here for the proclamation? Okay.
Like I say, I've had the pleasure to work a little bit in the healthcare administrative area, specifically around public health, but also have the honor to serve on several of the boards of the organizations that are here and some that aren't even here. So I'm in awe of the incredible work that you all do in a very difficult environment, where we're very spread out in rural Oregon and in Douglas County, and it's hard to get folks to move here sometimes to provide these services. The systems that are set up in Salem and in Washington DC for healthcare generally are centered around more urban areas, because those areas are urban, and they don't understand the unique challenges of rural America and rural Oregon. So I would like to invite some folks to speak a little bit about the work that they do. I'll start with Teresa from DPHN. Good morning.
Good morning. First, I wanna thank you for this opportunity to come together and recognize Rural Public Health Day. And I think everyone in this room recognizes the challenges of providing healthcare in rural communities and feel that we could not do the work that we do without the partnerships and the support. So again, thank you for this and for bringing us together this morning.
Thank you very much. Next, I believe, was Brian from North Douglas County Fire and EMS, who covers a lot of area, a lot of people, but a lot of area of the county.
I think we're roughly seven hundred and twenty square miles or something up there. It's a big area, really. It's a privilege to serve that community. We enjoy it every day. Our main focus with the rural health is more focused on prevention and getting community action and a little more self-resilience. We're probably, the ambulance, thirty minutes to the closest hospital in our area with multiple to choose from. The support of working with the county and our partner agencies, we're seeing outstanding results for a rural area. I come from a little city of Chicago, Illinois, where I was born, and to see what this community can do in a rural area is pretty impressive. You know, if you follow social media, there are a lot of negative stuff. What we have here in this area is, it impresses me immensely. I'm proud to be a partner. Thank you for today.
Appreciate the work you do. I'd like to invite up Fire Chief Rob Bullock.
Thank you, and just kinda to echo on what Brian was saying, because we are so spread out, it requires a whole network. It's not one agency that does it alone. All the small fire departments have to get there to provide care before an ambulance can get there. We have a large number of ambulances compared to like your larger cities, but we've gotta figure, they've got five, ten-minute response times, and they're at a hospital in a few minutes. We've got areas that are forty-five minutes plus just to get there, and then you've got an hour to get to the hospital. So our responders have more patient care responsibility than a lot of the paramedics do in large areas. So we're pretty proud of what we've been able to put together here as far as from our treatment protocols, just down to serving this large of an area and being able to take care of everybody. So, and that's, you know, that's everybody coming together and able to do that. And then whenever we have any major disaster or incident, you know, this community pulls together. Everybody pulls together. All these agencies here work together. You know, we get phone calls from each other. Hey, we've got this going on, can you go take care of it? And I've yet to find anybody saying no. So it's just the whole team that's brought together. It's not any one group that does this. So the fact that we're here to represent all of rural health, I think, is great. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for coming. And years ago, I had the honor of serving as the Chair of the MedCom Ambulance Authority and understanding and learning about how challenging doing ambulance services in a county like Douglas County is. It's very spread out and how much care is actually given by EMS. Like you say, starting with sometimes even the volunteer firefighters or the paid firefighters, moving to the ambulance, the more EMS, and then making sure that people have a chance to get to the hospital and get the care they need there. Without that early intervention, some of them wouldn't make it. So thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Adapt. We have the new executive director today, welcome.
Yes, thank you. My name is Steve Barron. I'm the new CEO for Adapt. And I've only been here for a few weeks, so I won't speak about specific programs and things, but I do wanna thank you for the recognition of Rural Health Day. I believe you said it best for someone who, if someone doesn't work in rural health, they don't understand the complexities and challenges that the rural environment, you know, brings to us. So you see from all the various agencies and organizations that are here, it takes a village, and then partnerships, and we're just really excited to continue our role in that. I think, you know, that everyone pulls together and gets the job done, and we will continue in the future. But thank you again for recognizing Rural Health Day.
Thank you and welcome to Douglas County. We're glad you're here. I believe the next one was Thrive Umpqua. Lance, would you like to say a few words?
Hi, I'm Lance Colley and the Chair of the Thrive Umpqua Board and the Steering Committee. Thank you very much for recognizing all of these organizations. We work together with virtually everyone in this room, as well as a number of the folks that weren't here. We do community well-being and wellness opportunities for people throughout Douglas County. We've been going since Blue Zones Project, which I know Tim and the county commissioners were instrumental in helping us put together over seven years ago now. So just wanna say thank you very much. We look forward to the next seven years and ruralities.
Ruralities.
Awesome. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Standing your weapon tar.
We're gonna look that up. I do wanna mention-
Pretty sure that's not on Scrabble.com.
I do wanna mention Lower Umpqua Hospital, the work they do or re-support. They often watch our meetings. They don't, it's a long ways to drive over for these proclamations, but that part of the county, they take care of an awful lot of services over there for people that are in that part of the county and really on the coast in general. So thank you to the Lower Umpqua Hospital District. Evergreen Family Medicine and Urgent Care.
Hi, thank you guys very much. My name's Kim Pyri. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Evergreen Family Medicine. I will just say that it's great to get the support at this level. We also, we're a certified rural health clinic. We work with the Oregon Office of Rural Health. We also work with the National Association of Rural Health Clinics. They do a lot of advocacy, a lot for telehealth, you know, to keep that going for the folks who can't come in. I have the privilege of working with Dr. John, Dr. Tim Powell, whose vision is to take care of Douglas County as best they can, fill any gaps, because our biggest quality metric is providing access to care. So I will just leave it in their, in their words, Dr. Tim would say this is our field to till. So we're doing what we can to add services that people have to go out of town for, mammography, endoscopy, things like that. So again, we all work together with everybody in this room. But thank you, guys.
Thank you. Sheriff, you wanna talk a little bit about some of the challenges of the people you get to take care of when they come into the jail? Some of the folks that haven't had healthcare in quite a while?
Sure. People don't often think about the Douglas County Jail being a healthcare provider. We're a little bit unique in that we don't have an open-door policy. You kinda have to earn your right to get healthcare in the jail, if you know what I mean. Statutorily, every county jail and prison in the state of Oregon is required to provide quality healthcare equal to, or at least equal to, healthcare that would be available to an individual if they weren't in custody. And so providing healthcare to our adults in custody in the jail is a priority and important to us. And to accomplish that, we contract with a professional healthcare provider to provide that care.
Well, thank you very much for the work you do.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna ask my fellow commissioners, would you like to say a few words?
Just appreciate you guys, everyone in the room. You all work together and we've had times in the county where everyone's had to pull together, and it always happens. And someone in here said it, the answer's always yes.
Yeah, I mean, these proclamations we do, you know, they're not just mere lip service. I mean, we really do mean these things. We really do value the work that you do and just, this is our way. It's just a small thing of just saying, thank you. I really mean that, thank you.
So on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, thank you all. We'll take a little break and allow you to get back to doing the great work you do, and then we'll continue with our meeting. You're welcome to stay.
We forgot to do a group photo. Cory reminded me, so.
Guess we're gonna do one group photo and then we can take a break. So you all come back forward. Some can come up above, some can be down in front.
That's why we have L.
Part of the health of getting up and down a bunch, right?
How you been?
Good.
Not too bad, busy?
Yeah, I bet.
Again, someone wanting to go up above?
Not as much as I'd like to.
Yeah, me neither.
Some taller folks up above between Chris and Chris and Boyce?
Taller folks, taller than me.
Or if you're wearing a hat.
Yeah.
Or if you're Brian.
Can I have a couple folks come over on the other side of Commissioner Boyce? Or would you come here?
One side out. Who are you?
Okay, it's ready. See my face, I can't remember who it is.
Ready? Smile. Take several in case anyone blinks. Boom. Okay, ready, smile. He's reviewing.
All right. Perfect.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good, you?
See ya.
Going again?
Okay, thank you. Yep, see ya.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on with the agenda. The next item is our consent agenda. We just have one routine item, and I'll move to approve the consent agenda. A motion of second, any questions or comments? Saying none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Criss?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. And to item number three, assistance, questions or comments? Anybody online today?
Nobody online.
Anybody here in the room that would like to come forward? Saying none, we'll move on to the agenda items. Agenda item number four is a county council item for the Building Department. Tiffany?
Tiffany Podbusnick, County Council. This is an ordinance, it's two zero two five dash eleven dash zero two. I'm gonna read the caption of this, and then following that, it would be the pleasure of the board to take action today. So the title is "An Ordinance Amending the Douglas County Building Code", Chapter fifteen point two five. Ordinance number two zero two five dash eleven dash zero two. First reading occurred two weeks ago, November fifth, twenty twenty-five. Second reading is today. If adopted by the board, the effective date would be February eighteenth, twenty twenty-six. It's the pleasure of the board.
Move to approve the ordinance.
I'll second.
We have a motion of second, any questions or comments? Saying none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Criss?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Agenda item number five is a county council item for the Solid Waste Department.
This is also a second reading of an ordinance. I'll read the caption, and then it would be the pleasure of the board. Caption reads, "An Ordinance Amending the Douglas County Sanitation Code", Chapter eight point two five. Ordinance number two zero two five dash eleven dash zero one. First reading occurred two weeks ago, November fifth, twenty twenty-five. Second reading is today. If adopted by the board, the effective date would be February eighteenth, twenty twenty-six.
I'll move to approve the ordinance.
I'll second that.
We have a motion of second, any questions or comments? Saying none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Criss?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Agenda item number six, third row, county council item.
This is a contract of sale between Douglas County as the buyer and Dewey and Cheryl Gibson as the sellers for a purchase price of sixty-three thousand dollars.
Move to approve the bargain and sell deed.
I'll second.
This is the contract for sale that would accept the bargain and sell deed.
We have a motion of second, any questions or comments? Saying none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Criss?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Agenda item number seven is a juvenile department item, and I'll invite up Cory Tate.
Morning, commissioners.
Put your hats on us.
My name is Cory Tate. I'm in the juvenile department, but I'm also the Lipstick Coordinator. Before you is a grant agreement, number TCP dash two seven dash fifteen, with the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for the twenty-five twenty-seven biennium. This award is funding two hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars for the Douglas County Mental Health Corps. This is to address the needs of adults who are involved in the criminal justice system with the goal of providing the opportunity to divert them from prison.
Move to approve the grant agreement.
I'll second.
A motion of second. Again, this grant agreement comes from the Criminal Justice Commission. I serve on the Criminal Justice Commission, so I will be abstaining, as I do when we vote to fund these from the commission. It's interesting there, they call everybody on the Criminal Justice Commission commissioners, but I'm a commissioner here, so I'm a commissioner commissioner there. But it's kinda interesting that even though none of us really benefit financially one way or the other, we've all adopted the process of abstaining at the Criminal Justice Commission level. And then, of course, when we take the money here, I'm also gonna abstain. But I would like to talk about our specialty courts, both this item and the second item, and the importance of the work that's done there. I know the agenda item talks about diverting people from prison. What is not in here is really the, also the important portion of these specialty courts that hold people accountable. So there's a way that people are held accountable. They correct their behaviors, fix whatever their problems are in life, and also at the same time, do that without having them go to prison. And this is a great opportunity, all of our specialty courts here at the county, to get people back on track, to hold them accountable for the problems they've had and the crimes they've committed, but also give them an opportunity to do better in life and are very successful. So I'm very proud of these programs and get to see all over the state how these work. And I would contend ours work here is good as anywhere in the state of work. And so we've got great people working on them. With that, we have a motion of second. Any further questions or comments? Saying none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Criss?
Aye.
Chair abstains, and the motion passes. Agenda item number eight is another grant agreement for the juvenile department.
Thank you. Cory Tate again, juvenile department, also Lipstick Coordinator. Before you is another grant agreement, number TCP two seven dash fourteen, with the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for the twenty-five twenty-seven- with the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for the twenty-five twenty-seven biennium. This award is funding three hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars for the Douglas County Adult Drug Court. This is also to address the needs of adults who are involved with criminal justice system with the goal of providing the opportunity to divert them from prison and keeping them here local.
Approve the grant agreement. You second.
A motion, a second, any questions or comments? Commissioner Voice, you want to give us a quick comment about the drug court graduations and the changes that are changed through that process?
Yeah, if you don't, haven't had a chance to get to a drug court graduation, you need to go. It's grown in size and popularity to the point now where we have them at the fairgrounds instead of in one of the judges' courtrooms. The largest following of supporters of the drug court program are the past graduates and their families. So it's an opportunity for the people in the community to really see what is being done with the drug epidemic and the crime that's associated with it in Douglas County. Sometimes there's just sort of a bleak outlook, people think that crime punishments aren't tough enough and that nothing's being done and people go to jail and get released and, you know, we're, we're, all of us who work in this arena are working within the confines of the statutes and the laws that allow us to do this work in the state. So that includes the police officers on the street, sheriff and the people that run the jail and the district attorneys and the judges and all of us. So the work is being done and the success stories are at drug court graduations. So people need to come and see that if they get a chance. It's, it's a, it's an eye-opening experience and well worth your time to go, I encourage it.
Thank you for that. So we have a motion, a second, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question, Commissioner Voice.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruss.
Aye.
The Chair abstains and the motion passes.
I have one extra thing.
Please.
We're celebrating seven people at our next graduation, which will be December sixteen at five fifteen PM at the Douglas County Fairgrounds in Cascade Hall. So we would like to invite all Commissioners and any citizens who would like to, again, hear the stories that Commissioner Voice mentioned. It's a great experience, thank you.
Agenda item number nine is a management and finance item by our Finance Director, Dan Wilson, good morning.
Morning Commissioners, Dan Wilson, Management Finance. This is a grant agreement between Douglas County and the City of Oakland. The agreement details the duties to be performed by each party subject to the overall grant agreement between Douglas County and the Oregon Housing Community Services Department, the visitor peer program, which is for the benefit of the City of Oakland.
I'll move to approve the grant agreement, I'll second that.
Motion, a second, questions or comments?
Quick one to know on this, this is a direct result of the Labor Day fires of twenty twenty and the state's recognition that there was, needed to be some grants available for impacted municipalities and districts to take care of some infrastructure that may have been damaged and to mitigate future ones. So now we are, you know, over five years later, we are, you know, accepting, I guess this is a, we're doing a grant agreement, we've already accepted the grant from the state and I really appreciate Dan having to do all this work because really this is gonna be a lot of work, the City of Oakland is gonna benefit from this grant. They're gonna upgrade their water system, which was damaged in those fires and continually has a problem because of the watershed being damaged. So, you know, this, but it doesn't go without saying that this is a ton of work on your part, Dan, and I'm glad you stepped up when they, when they said that they couldn't administer this grant and you said we could. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, and I know Commissioner Cruss, you served on the, and ran the Review Committee Board that finally did the grant approval, so thank you for doing that work and all the recovery group from the Arch Creek Fire. I think a lot of people are surprised to hear that that work continues. Believe you just were on a call this week, more conversation around recovery all these years later. So thank you for all that work you've done. So we have a motion and a second, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question, Commissioner Voice.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruss.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes, thank you Dan. And item number ten is a Public Works item, I'll invite up our Public Works Director, Scott Adams, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Scott Adams, Public Works. Item number ten is a contract between Douglas County and God and Country Tree Service LLC for miscellaneous road maintenance on an on-call and as-needed basis.
Move to approve the contract, I'll second.
A motion, a second, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question, Commissioner Voice.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruss.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes, thank you. Agenda item number eleven is a Sheriff's Office item, it's a series of agreements. I'll invite Douglas County Sheriff, John Hanlon.
Good morning Commissioners, John Hanlon, Douglas County Sheriff. This item before you this morning is an agreement that consists of a number of contracts for Douglas, the Douglas County Sheriff patrols on private timberlands for timberland holdings through Douglas Timber Operators or DTO for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. The companies agree to share the cost of payment to Douglas County for one law enforcement officer enforcement services on contracted land in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This contract pays for one full-time deputy and is a net zero agreement. The agreements are valid through six thirty of twenty twenty-six.
I'll move to approve the agreements. I'll second that.
A motion, a second, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question, Commissioner Voice.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruss. Chair votes aye and the motion passes, thank you Sheriff. Agenda item number twelve is a Solid Waste Department item, I'll invite up the Solid Waste Director, Nick Freisinger, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Nick Freisinger, Solid Waste. Item number twelve is an intergovernmental agreement between Douglas County and the Bureau of Land Management for RV Storage and Disposal.
Approve the intergovernmental agreement. I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further questions or comments?
Quick comment on this one, this, you know, it's kind of an interesting one for, there's lots of folks out there that, you know, have complained about the dumping of RVs on our, on sea lands and really it was, you know, nobody was reaching out to us from the VLM to talk to us about it. Nick, you reached out to them and said, hey, you know, we're disposing these for some of the cities and taking care of them, would you be interested in, and I was doing that for you and they jumped on the chance and I really appreciate this kind of help clean up some of those lands.
Yeah, I'm excited about the partnership and excited to be able to clean up the on-sea lands, appreciate the Commissioners' support.
Well, thank you. Any other questions or comments, we have a motion, a second. Seeing none, I'll call the question, Commissioner Voice.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruss.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes, thank you Nick. Agenda item number thirteen is Commissioner comments, I do want to note that we are gonna reconvene after this meeting as the Local Contracting Review Board, but before then, I'd like to ask for Commissioner comments.
Nothing for me today.
Nothing for me either. Again, I will adjourn this meeting and then we will reconvene as the Local Contracting Review Board. See, we have one item today and that's a county council item for the IT Radio Department, Tiffany?
Tiffany Podbusnick, County Council. This is a board order that would approve Douglas County to use a special procurement for the purchase of mobile and/or portable radios based on soliciting two informal quotes. I believe at this point the county has looked into quotes and has found that doing it in this manner offers the best value to the county for what we're looking to purchase.
Move to approve board order, I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question, Commissioner Voice.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruss.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Seeing no further business, I will adjourn this meeting, thank you all for being here.